Good evening and welcome to the Select Board and Wage and Personnel Board meeting of Tuesday, September 30th, 2025 at 5:47 PM at the Lakeville Police Station. LakeCam is recording this meeting. Is anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing no one, let's move on to the call to order.
Hunt, present.
Plug Aye.
Candido here and Pledge of Allegiance in the corner of the room. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for everyone joining us today. Appreciate everyone's time. Andrew, do you want to, I'm going to skip over the announcements and put those last, I'm going to have you do yours and then I'm going to take it out of order for the Rocky Woods if you would not mind.
Sure.
Is that okay with the board? Okay.
Yes. Thumbs up from Larry. Two thumbs up.
So outreach has begun on the Old Colony building project. We started to post stuff to social media and the town website. Hope to keep doing that every few weeks until the election on November 18th from 12 to 8 PM at Loon Pond Lodge. The Clear Pond Park Master Plan has been released to the social media and town website. We're still reviewing it. We just want everyone in the public to see it. There's no plans at this time to necessarily implement it, but that those talks are ongoing and I think it's going to be a future discussion in front of the Select Board in the next maybe a few weeks to a month.
Yeah, and then we can talk about funding sources, which is always on top of mind. But now that we are in compliance with the, the open space plan, we are eligible to try to go for grants to do some of these projects and funding.
Yep. A lot of behind the scene work has been done by Emily Sorette on procurement. I put a list inside the TA report of future ones. In a small town like Lakeville, it's kind of, sometimes you don't realize how much we buy and how much we like have to legally procure stuff. And Emily's done a great job the last few weeks of doing that. Similarly, the Finance Department did a lot of significant work on the fiscal '24 audit finalization as well as borrowing. Preparation for the three big projects that we're going to have to borrow soon, which are the fire station, Route 79, and Assawomset Doors and Windows Project. So Mike Ellis and Erica Cray have been instrumental in doing that. And the last one, I met briefly with Thorndike Development on the Lakeville Country Club proposal that they will be presenting. And that'll be a joint meeting with the Planning Board and Select Board on October 14th. That's everything I have.
I have two questions, or three rather. Where are we with the bathrooms in Historic Town Hall? I know that there was something holding up the completion of the bathrooms. How, how close are we at this point?
It should be completed. A few weeks ago, someone said that they needed a final inspection, but otherwise it was done.
Okay. That would be a wonderful thing and it's just a huge asset for that building to be able to be usable at this point. Pickens Street Bridge. I know you responded to me. Would you like to tell the people at home the timeline? I'm going to leave you with the unpopular task of telling the timeline.
It's on the spot here, but I know it's like 18 months. Let's see.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's 2026 for that side, the one side, and then 2027 for the other side. So. What do they actually do to it? Well, they're restoring all the underneath as well to make sure it's stable. Not, I have, I have no issue with them doing it. It just does take a very, a very long time.
Winter '27 is when it'll be completed.
Yeah, so I'm sorry for everyone, but I'm happy for everyone to have the safe bridge to cross and go under. And then the trash survey.
Should be going out this week.
Okay, and how did we decide to push it out?
Um, we're looking, because we're going to do multiple surveys for different things, for different committees. It's probably going to be a survey monkey. We're going to probably get a subscription, which is very cheap. To do it that way, we're also going to print it out, put it at all the big locations. Might not be a bad idea to have it at Fall Town Meeting.
Yeah.
So.
People can partake.
Right.
All right, fantastic. Does anyone have any questions for Andrew on any of the TA report items or anything that wasn't on there? Nope?
Oh, man, I have one question.
Yes.
I know, I saw the Clear Pond report. There were, there were no estimated costs included in the report.
No, there is. It should be the, one last page, it's 3.4 million. It's going to have to probably be phased depending on what it is, what we do first and what we decide.
Going for grants.
Okay, I missed that. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Taking out of order and moving to Rocky Woods discussion. We had resident reach out to us, reach out to Member Plonka so we could have a discussion on what's happening at Rocky Woods. Member Plonka, I'll give this to you to do the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was invited to a neighborhood meeting hosted by the Coast Dats two, three weeks ago, three weeks ago roughly, the exact date. That was attended by about 15 to 20, yeah, residents. And it was to discuss what's going on at Rocky, Simmons Hill, Rocky Woods, specifically Phase One. And the residents are in support of maybe a change in some of the proposed development. So they requested through me, and I requested to add it to the agenda, to give them an opportunity to discuss what some of the residents would like to see for the development for that Phase One. And with that, we'll turn it over if we want to have some of the residents speak.
Who would like to speak? Three minutes is yours.
Good evening. Larry Costin, 45 Freetown Street, Lakeville. As Chris said, we had sent out a letter to all the residents in that general area, Holland Street, County, all the, I mean, County Street, all the side streets. We got about 20 people that show up. As you're all aware, our biggest concerns of the two access points from, you know, for Freetown Street. One selfishly is directly in my property. Matter of fact, that loose part of my backyard that I didn't even know wasn't my backyard. And then the Salt Tower Road also is the second form. Going to create a big mess. So in conversations of this going back from its very origin, we know that Mohammed originally requested for a rezoning to be commercial zoning. And per the historical reaction in Lakeville, everybody lost their mind. And now talking about this to other people, you know, it's always been my opinion that's the reason I serve on the Economic Development Committee, is that we can't remain a better community. They can't sustain this. So this is a good opportunity for us to get some business into town and go back to Mohammed and say, hey, listen, let's revisit this. You know, originally, I guess he was going to petition the state to have a grant put in from 140, use Colony coming in for, for commercial, because you're never going to commercial vehicles and not a Freetown Street. Let's go back and talk to him about this. That was his original plan. And he was scared off because of the hospital project. I honestly don't know what scared him off, but he got scared off. I was, I was sitting at town meeting when he pulled his warrant at town meeting. I mean, it was that quick. So we spoke to it and a lot of the, everybody showed up. We were all in agreement that the right way to go here is to go back to him and say, listen, what can we do here? Let's come up with a development plan for this property that doesn't bring 300 plus houses, which is more like, most likely going to decimate our school system, crucify us on traffic on our street. Now, I know they did road studies and they had the peer review. We live on that street. I defy anybody to go there at 2:05 any weekday and try to get from Freetown Street onto County Street. They say it was an average of three minutes. It's 15 minutes. So I don't know who did this study. I know who did this study. I don't know who reviewed it, but they don't live there. So a residential development's a bad idea for that spot, not to mention.
Can I interrupt you one second?
Sure.
Have you, you didn't have any chance to speak with the developer?
We have not because Chris and I discussed, Chris came to the meeting because he, he found out, because we put it in his mailbox as well. And Chris and I discussed and we said, you know, maybe before we go to him, I have all his Mohammed's contacts, because Mohammed originally talked to him.
Because we reached out to him when you guys came to us, because you always, if it's about a project, you always.
I get it. And I, I have his direct information. I spoke to him day one when he talked about this because I have a mutual acquaintance through him. He's been to my property. And so we didn't reach out to him because Chris felt, let's talk to Select Board first, and I agreed. And see if we can come up with a plan that we can present to Mohammed and see if there's maybe something we could do to change this from a residential to a commercial industrial project warehouse, accommodation stores. You know, I don't understand why we don't have something like that. We have a grocery store in this town, right? And I know we're a small town, but if you have access from 140, something like a, maybe not as big, but like a Mansfield Crossing or, or a Wareham Crossing or Cranberry Crossing, something like that would be great for this town. Business, restaurants, shopping, you know, that type of town with access from County and 140 would be great. And it's a great source of revenue for the town without burdening our infrastructure. I think he'd, you know, be willing to hear it out anyhow. From what I've heard about him, he's willing to talk about anything. Whether he's willing to jump off it, you know, on it, I don't know. Understanding the development end of things, commercial is way more profitable than residential. So I don't see why he wouldn't, is my, was, was my point. And it was original as thought. So that's where we are. 20 people showed up. All 20 of us agreed that this was a good proposal to bring to him. And so we're here to talk to you.
All right. I'd like to hear from any other residents that would like to speak on this as well. Anyone else here to speak on it?
All of my residents.
Wow.
I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
All right, well. You have to come to the mic and identify yourself, please.
I'm just trying to hear the other one's county road. I don't know where the mic is.
Have a seat.
I don't have that much to say. I just really wanted to agree with you.
You can agree on the microphone.
Yeah, no, on the record, I agree that any approach is better than the approach that we're taking. And can I do a little tangent here for a second?
How, how deep is this tangent?
This tangent is just about the concept of 40 beats in general.
No, we have no control over that.
Okay, well, except we do. We can say no.
So we are in a position now where we could possibly say no, but not really. Yeah.
Okay, so then I'll stay on topic. This is not the highest, what's currently on the table is not the highest and best use of, of that piece of property. This is a fascinating proposal at whatever scale it comes in at because there are, I'm sure you guys know, enormous costs involved with residential housing. We used to, a long time ago, I sat in your chair, a long time ago. And one of the things we always had running current was what does each housing start cost? Because there was once upon a time, there was confusion that more houses meant more taxes. But those costs are outweigh, outweigh whatever taxes do come in, as you know. And so at some level, you get to 350, that's probably unsustainable, honestly. That's probably not even the equivalent to the amount of money the state would hold. Like, that's the big, that's the, that's the stick, right?
It's all stick. There's no carrot.
Yeah, well, yeah, but that is the stick. And it would be interesting to know what that took, if the state withheld every single penny, what would that be? And I don't think they're allowed to, by the way. Relative to what it's going to cost us for an average, for an aggregate, 350, say that's 20 grand a house, who knows? It might not be that high yet. It used to be 10, but that was a long time ago, like I said. So I think anything infrastructure wise to include roads, and that impacts me as well. I'm right at the intersection of Freetown Street. But also the schools and also our bottom line, the town's bottom line, we cannot afford a project of that size, I don't think. So I think it's a great idea. 100% support. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to it before I turn this over to our town administrator? So our town administrator did have a chance to speak to Mohammed a little bit about this.
Briefly, briefly.
I'll let you.
I mean, so obviously he's, it's been a few years since he started this project. He's put a significant amount of money into it. I think my understanding is he's probably going to go and try to get the comprehensive permit. And then he's probably going to entertain this. Whether it makes fiscal sense at that point to do that, it's up to him. Another important note, I think this is Phase One in his plans. Phase Two would be out Conneria County. And so I don't know what he plans to do there. I think that's a good chance to do business. Maybe rezone to business. Otherwise, that's probably going to be housing as well.
And that's something that you'll have to keep in mind, that we really have currently two corridors of business in this town, and that's 18 and 105. We haven't really utilized it in the way that one would really use these type of economic corridors with the correct amount of infrastructure being water and sewer. And anything that would be done in the future would have to have those type of considerations too. So those type of properties are few and far between that are not on 18 and 105.
Well, I think Rocky Woods could qualify for water coming in from, from New Bedford Line, or is that a?
There's a lot of coulda, shoulda, coulda.
There's a possibility for, for a large line to come through there.
Andrew and I both researched it, and it is a possibility, but that would require a, a new IMA with New Bedford, because ours expired. And also the water line is maintained by Freetown, so we also need Freetown's approval. So it is a possibility, not a cert, not certainty, but it is a possibility.
There would be a lot of moving parts.
Right, and you also.
And a significant expense for him as well.
Expense on him, but also you and I discussed that once you run that in, you open up that whole area for future development. So I get that. I'm just saying is I think, and, and you know, maybe at this point, we need to really talk to Mohammed and more importantly, even if he's going to stay with this, this development, try to get him back off these Freetown Street. It just, it can't withstand this. You're going to decimate at least, you know, six, seven residents, you know, quality of life, not to mention their property values. And then we need to, you know, see, you know, what can we do to get you to go out to County? You know, I don't care. You want to use my road as a fire access road with a break gate? I'm happy. Maybe we got to compromise and come in with one way from Freetown, a one-way street. But we got to try to have a conversation with him, not just, not just leave rebate. I'm not going to get into other committees. But yeah, it's time to have serious conversations. The clock's running out. And what are we left on the 180 days now? November?
Uh, something like that, yeah. I don't know.
So we're close. And this is the time to do it. No, I'm not saying he hasn't spent money. He has. He's done development. But all the, the money he spent so far for surveying, he had to do it anyhow. He's already had equipment back there clearing it roads and stuff.
It's just difficult to tell someone what to do with their property.
It is, but he wanted this originally. That's my point. Is that I don't understand why he wouldn't want to go back to it if he saw it was profitable and commercials profitable.
And, and you know, and there's all varying different degrees on what he wants to do and what he wants to invest that'll, that'll be taken, you know, the primary consideration. So, Member Hunt, did you have anything? I thought I saw you for a minute. I was like that.
Yeah, that was the brief moment of clarity. I have spent a considerable amount of time on that property in fall and winter endeavors for a number of years. And, you know, it surprised me when they were talking about putting this number of houses out there.
Because of the ledge?
Because of the ledge, because of the thermal pools, because of the amount of water out there and so forth. And I have always felt that this property lended itself to a potential off-ramp from Route 140, similar to like what Independence Way does in Assomna. And although I have never been asked, I would certainly support heading towards the industrial or commercial development out there far more than anything residential.
So notice or comments to me, Madam Chair? So I think the, what I'd like to propose or make a motion that we, if, when we vote on it, that the Select Board draft a letter of support for a residential, a commercial development, supporting the residents.
So I don't know on the language of that. I think the language might need to be a little more neutral, that we'd like to craft a conversation about the possibility of a change of use. Yeah, I don't know. As our board, I want to make sure I'm not stepping on other boards' toes for that, but we just want to represent the, the people of that area and the whole town.
Madam Chair, to Larry's point previously, as discussed by the developer, that he would have liked to have headed that direction, maybe a letter from the board asking if that would still be something in, within consideration.
I think that would be appropriate language. So I think we can leave the exact language up to Andrew, but the, the general idea would be that the board sends a letter of support to have additional conversations and about the possibility of using this for industrial use as opposed to residential use. Does that cover?
Yeah, residents or a representative of a number of residents appeared at the board and, and brought this back to our attention. And we're wondering if that is still something that may be on the table moving forward.
And then obviously other residents, if you're not being heard, please reach out and, and let us know if you have any further comments on it, but I, I would be in support. So you want to make that motion?
Over.
I'll let you. I know, we're still ready.
Madam Chair, I think you had one more person at one.
Oh, I have a question.
Couldn't answer a question.
Sherry Costin, 45 Freetown Street. You said industrial and are industrial and commercial interchangeable in terms of use?
It's the same zoning?
Is the zoning different here?
I think it's the same.
Yeah, industrial.
I know, I know some, some zoning it isn't, some it is.
Industrial, commercial is the same. You know what? Now I'm going to question it.
Well, like, what do, what do we mean by warehouses? My, my opinion's industrial, but it's commercial nature.
Yep.
So it's kind of the same thing.
Yeah. So, but I think the way it breaks it down in our, in our taxes, it says commercial, industrial. And in our zoning, it says commercial.
Yeah, is, is the thought to do a business district or is the thought to do an industrial district?
Well, Larry, you had said when you were talking about other opportunities too.
Well, let's face it, he has a lot of property there. It's a, how many acres is that? Does, I don't remember.
200.
200, that's part of it, right? So, but whatever, so there's a lot of land.
Because you were talking.
If he wants to throw a couple warehouses in and then do, you know, further up towards County to do a shopping development, I don't see, you know, I can't see why that's a bad idea for this community.
So are we saying mixed use at all?
I would say it's mixed use, but.
Or are we saying mixed use minus residential? I just want to be.
Yes.
Yeah.
We need to, we need to get, in my opinion, we need to get off of the, off of the development of residential.
So it would be commercial, industrial?
Commercial, industrial.
Yeah, because.
And then we come up with a building plan that, that specifies. Now, I know he can't necessarily say, we're going to have an on-ramp from 140. He has no say in that. That's the state. He can petition the state, but he's pretty well-connected. I'm sure he can make that happen.
But if I say mixed use, it includes.
That excludes residential, which is scary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, I just, I didn't mean to split hairs, but when you were, when you were discussing about the motion to say industrial, I just thought, well, that's why I wasn't sure if industrial and commercial were the same. So I just want to make sure as we're wording it, that we're wording it appropriately.
Yeah, I mean, there is business and there is industrial zones, so.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, through you, maybe, and he'll yell at me for doing this, but maybe, maybe we loop Mr. Darling in one more time and throw one more thing on his plate.
Did he send me a message already?
Yeah, I'm waiting now that I've said his name out loud.
He's like, yeah, that's wrong.
Maybe loop him in and get his opinion on something before we.
And we can put that in the motion just to firm up the language to represent what we talked about. So, so moved?
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh.
So moved.
Okay, so moved, okay.
Excellent.
Coming, guys.
And then we can go back and make sure we have all the language right for the next meeting. We'll be back again next week, so it'll be a great turnaround in case there's something else we should discuss. So Andrew, we'll put that on next week's meeting as well. And then we can make sure we have everything kind of buttoned up.
Definitely.
For the language.
All right, and we'll hold off once you've sent the letter, then we can, we'll wait and then we can reach out as a group and see what happens. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay.
You need to vote.
Oh, sorry.
Hunt, I.
Plug Aye.
Candido I. Perfect. Thank you for keeping us honest. We're going to move to the hearing. And that is number five. Thank you for making, they gave me big font. I appreciate it.
It really is nice.
Yeah, it really is. Commonwealth of Massachusetts Town of Lakeville Public Hearing on Verizon New England Inc. Cable Television Franchise Renewal. September 30th, 2025. Good evening. Welcome to Town of Lakeville's Public Hearing on Verizon's Cable License Renewal. Notice of this hearing was in the local newspaper two successive weeks. Copies of the legal notices are entered into the record as hearing exhibits. By way of the brief background for the public, Verizon's cable television license expires on May 4, 2028. The Federal Cable Act provides for towns holding public hearing to allow the public an opportunity to comment on the public and town cable-related needs. The process of ascertaining community cable needs will continue after the close of this hearing, so there will be further opportunity for comments to be submitted to the town. Members of the public may comment about all cable-related matters, including but not limited to customer service, Comcast's use of care of the town's public ways, the important area of the town's renewal needs for the local studio, local government programming, local channels for public, educational and government access. Members of the Select Board may also have questions and comments. We are ready to accept comments from the public and interested participants to submit comments. Please stand, state your name and address before commenting and come to a microphone. We welcome your comments, if any, and now open the record for public comments. Oh. Public comment? Jose, sorry, I missed you.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Jose. Still on mute? They're still muted. Lost a wrench in the works over there for you.
He's muted.
It's still muted. Jose, it's still muted.
Jose, I'm going to move on to Noel first and then give you a moment. Noel, if you wouldn't mind.
Hi, my name is Noel Rillo. I'm a resident of Lakeville. And I was told that this is my opportunity to tell you how much I, that we need LakeCam. It's the only way, and I mean the only way, that the residents and people who live here can keep on top of what's happening at the many meetings. I think we have seven different boards going on. And there's just, this is the only, LakeCam is the only coverage we have. So if you pull LakeCam, it's basically a news blackout, in my opinion. It's the only way that, that we have a very small weekly newspaper. It doesn't begin to cover what happens in these meetings. So please keep our LakeCam coming.
Keep here.
Thank you.
Jose.
Yes?
We can hear you.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not on the Cable Advisory Committee. I just assist and give advice about LakeCam to Cable Advisory Committee. I, I think you should turn this over to Bill August in case he needs to have any say.
To the chair, should I make at this time a few brief comments?
You can, I don't see anyone else coming up to the mic, so please do.
I mean, my role is as the municipal special cable counsel to the Select Board as the cable license issuing authority, and I represented the town in the two previous renewals, one with Comcast a couple of years ago, and the prior one with Verizon, and then my law partner before me represented Lakeville, so we go way back, having worked very closely with the Select Boards and the town officials and with Lake Cam. But my perspective is just as legal counsel, so I cannot really speak as a resident or person living in the town. But from an attorney's perspective, this hearing and the phase that we are in now is very simple. It's to, in the Cable Act, it's called ascertainment of needs, so we're just identifying town needs. It's, that's, conceptually, that's all it is. Usually, the renewal focuses on the amount of financial support for the local facilities, because the other parts of the cable system are more standardized and regional and uniform. But every town, very interestingly, under the Cable Act, does have a unique mix of town-specific, public, educational, and governmental channels, and they've all negotiated varying degrees of public support for their local facilities. So since that consumes most of the negotiation energy, I just think it's useful as a counsel to emphasize to the Select Board, that's what we're doing now, and for Phase One of renewal. It's quite early in the process, so, and there's no heavy lifting at this hearing. We don't have to decide anything, we're basically just starting a process to listen to community comments and input about needs. And the Cable Act says, you have to do that at a hearing, but you can also keep the record open after a hearing for an ascertainment of needs record. So, I'm just happy to have the opportunity to explain that to you, the License Issuing Authority, and it is early, because the Federal Cable Act provides for doing that in the third year prior to the expiration. So once we have this under our belt, in terms of meeting the federal requirement to have an early ascertainment hearing, we can slow down a little, there's not a lot of heavy lifting in the rest of the first year or the second year. It's really not until the third year that Verizon takes seriously exchanging license drafts and getting into the nitty-gritty of negotiations. The one thing we really should do, though, in Year One of this three-year federal window, and I've worked on this in the past with Jose and Cable Committee, is develop their accurate and credible operating and capital budgets, so that when we do get into that negotiation stage, we can stand out as having a strong case for Verizon to continue and potentially adjust upward somewhat to meet growing needs, the operating and capital budgets, which are the two buckets of money, operating budget and equipment budget, capital budget, under a renewal license. So that's my overview. I'll also say, just as an observation, that through the two prior renewals I did, there was an abundance of information about the large quantity of municipal meeting coverage and other community events that Lake Cam did provide, and as the last speaker said, it is unique. You won't find any town-specific media coverage on your network affiliates, and a lot of work goes into those local productions, it's original programming. And I would turn it back to Jose, who's more of an expert on the actual benefits of local programming in Lakeville.
We already produce annual budgets, and we produce five-year capital plans, so those will be submitted. I'm also going to be advising the Cable TV Advisor Committee that we should request a, an inflation-adjusted capital monies for when it will start, and it's going to be approximately going from fifteen thousand, fifteen and a half thousand to probably eighteen to twenty thousand for the next contract to just keep up with inflation. I'd want to make sure everyone understands, who's listening and watching, these funds come from cable TV subscribers, not from the companies themselves, so your interest is very much in this, and we take it seriously, and we do our best to provide an excellent product for what you pay. Does anyone have any questions for me or Bill?
Not at this time, it looks like. Well, thank you both very much for speaking up.
Right, I always have one question for the Lakeville Select Board, is when is there going to be a Ted Williams Museum? All right.
Andrew, is that part of the parks plan?
No, at this point.
Well, thank you both.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both. As.
Thank you.
As Attorney August mentioned, and as I mentioned in the opening, we are keeping this hearing open to allow for comments. Do we have a date to close? I didn't see that as part of our.
Um, it's a question maybe for Bill, one that could close.
Right, you can have a date certain, like, two weeks hence, or, you know, the date of your next Select Board meeting, but I do want to clarify that under the Cable Act, I mean, you have to close a hearing, because, you know, hearings must close by a date certain, but even after the close of this hearing, under the Cable Act, there's this ongoing thing called ascertainment, where the towns keep gathering information and keep it in a record, which is separate from the hearing record, technically, because the hearing is closed, but it serves the same function. It assembles exhibits, anything, written documents, anything that is relevant to our negotiating to prove needs during renewal.
Mr. August, should I make a close date for two weeks?
Yeah, that would be fine, yeah, yes.
All right. Any comments, anything from the board?
Madam Chair, it may be way early, because I understand it's a three-year process, but I know a prior resident noted the number of, I don't begin to be an expert on the complexities of this, but regarding the fees collected, we all know.
Two point five percent. Jose, what's our subscriber fee percentage currently?
It's currently four point, four point seven five percent.
Four seven five.
For every subscriber.
Yep.
Right, and we know that both the cable companies are losing customers, they're providing internet service, so I think the prior comment was, are we going to?
Try to capture the streaming dollars.
It's great, if they come back and they say, well, yeah, our cable subscribers is drastically going down, you're going to get reduction.
Exactly.
Is that going to be a discussion point coming down?
Personally, that will be a big comment, and I know we probably won't get any traction on it, but I would like to see whatever language that we have in our contract state, that if the opportunity does come up within the next ten years, or however long we decide the contract is, that it does not preclude us from taking any funds from any streaming services that become available legally, so I want to make sure we open the door to that. We might not be able to push it, but if it becomes available, we should probably jump on it as soon as possible.
I'm sure all communities have got the same thought in that way, they all know that the way the future is going with the streaming and.
Yep, yep, people are tuning out of cable and onto, you know, à la carte services.
Okay, if I don't have any more comments, I'll take a motion to close the hearing on the fourteenth of October?
Are you?
Yeah, why not? Get on it.
Because I got to learn eventually, right? All right, I will make the motion to close the hearing for the, the public hearing for Verizon Cable Television, Cable Television Franchise Renewal on October fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Plug I.
Plug I.
Candy to I. Excellent, thank you, everyone, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, take care.
Night.
All right, moving right along, discuss possible vote to approve Select Board minutes of September nine, twenty twenty five, and September sixteen, twenty twenty five. Member Carboni forwarded on.
Yep, so as amended.
Yep, okay. She had a couple small ministerial dates.
Yeah.
Yep. Any, were there any other comments?
Yes, I believe it was the, the second meeting minutes.
Sixteenth?
Yes. Can I find them now?
I'm still getting used to the front-to-back copies. Sometimes it takes three minutes.
No, no, yep, not September nine, it was sixteen, I can't find my copy.
Thank you.
Yes, it was the page seven, we talked about, oh. Okay, it starts on page six, it's Old Colony Building Committee. So if you drop, come to page seven. Seafloor confirmed that Superintendent Timo working on additional literature to mail to make sure the older population that is not on social media is made aware of what's happening at school. I, I didn't, I did not confirm that, I was going to confirm if that was a possibility.
Yep.
That's what it was, yes.
So as amended, as amended then.
And Madam Chair, I did update the board, that they confirmed that they are not, they do not have, they're limited on what they can do, and so there will not be any mailing, they're strictly will be online.
Excellent, thank you very much. That makes it incumbent on us to put more product out there for people. I will take a motion for the meeting minutes of September nine, twenty twenty five, and the meeting minutes of September sixteen, twenty twenty five, to approve as amended.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Plug I.
Plug I.
Candy to I. Discuss a possible vote to approve the town election warrant and proposed debt exclusion vote language for Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School for November eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, what I can do, I'm lost, I'm totally lost here.
Two. All right, Andrew, would you like to walk us through these agenda, I mean, these special town meeting articles?
Are we doing the articles or the Old Colony?
Yeah, we started out on Old Colony.
It says, first, approve election warrant, right? Oh, election warrant, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
The warrant word threw me off. Yeah, go ahead.
So, at the prior Select Board meeting, the Select Board decided to have a debt exclusion vote on the same day as the ballot vote, so I went back and got the wording from Bond Council for the district, and this is what it should look like, and then the town clerk basically printed out on the election warrant what it would look like, so we're looking to approve the warrant, but also the debt exclusion language itself.
So I'm going to read that out loud, so everyone can know.
Yep.
What it is. The, the vote itself, actually, let me just read the synopsis. The Select Board voted, you didn't read that out, right, the overview?
No, I just kind of summarized it.
Okay, Select Board voted to hold debt exclusion election on the same time date as Old Colony Regional Voc- Vocational Technical High School District vote for their new high school building. The Bond Council recommended these, this language. Shall the Town of Lakeville be allowed to be exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called its allocable share of the bonds of Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School District, in order to pay costs of designing, construction, constructing, originally equipping, and furnishing a new district high school and related athletic facilities located at four seven six North Avenue, Rochester, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. So that would be the motion. Would someone like to second it for discussion?
Second.
All right, so I get so many questions on this, I'm going to let Andrew answer it, because I think he's even got more than me, on the way our agreement works with Old Colony, and how, what our choices are on, on this vote and appropriating funds. So if you wouldn't mind telling the people at home, and I know we've said it a bunch of times and put it in our literature, about why this vote matters, it matters to vote this as a override instead of letting it fail, and what happens if we let it fail, because of those are the questions I'm getting the most of.
Yep, so we've started the process to social media, that's what it looks like. So the total project cost is two hundred and eighty-eight million. MSBA, which is the Massachusetts School Building Authority, will give a grant, they decided to give us a grant for the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine million, which leaves Lakeville's share, because we're twenty-five percent of the population of Old Colony Regional School District, it's about forty million, thirty-nine and change. Now, that has to be funded.
And I'm just going to interrupt right there, thirty million is the highest possible estimate that they're going, they put in all the contingencies in that as well, not that it makes it any better, but just to throw that out there.
So the school district can call an election, which essentially it substitutes for our town meeting, so that is our equivalent of our town meeting vote, so they call the election, so when you get to the polls, you'll see two ballots. The first one will be whether you approve the project. That ballot question that I've seen has the number in it, but that's just to approve the project, not to fund it. So if that project passes with that first vote, first ballot vote, we have to fund it somehow, some way, as the school gets constructed.
And it's not just our vote, it's all the member towns' votes.
Yep, it's all, it's all five member towns.
So if we vote it down, but all the other member towns vote for it, or enough, enough of the member towns vote for it, we still have to pay for it.
Yep, and so for a small town, all five towns are small, they can't possibly do this in the operating budget, the only thing that makes sense is debt exclusion. If the debt exclusion fails, I think I'm probably going to recommend going back and doing it again, otherwise, we have to pay the debt payment, which I, I kind of estimate probably one point two to one point five million per year.
Which is pretty much the budget of our fire department completely.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then we'll have to do it all again the year after that, so.
Not saying anything about the fire department, it's just, there's an equivalency there.
But for thirty years, we'll have to fork over one point five, that's why it makes sense to do a debt exclusion.
Yes.
And for the average assessment, the average home in town is, it's five hundred and seventy-two thousand, that's about four hundred and fifty-two dollars per year.
So it's not insignificant, and we do realize this, and the members of the committee had lots of robust conversation with Old Colony and their representatives in, two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Yep.
Yeah.
Three weeks ago.
At the library, and we do know the ask, but it's not really an ask, it's just how it's funded that's really at stake for this vote. We don't, we don't have a say to say no unless all the towns say no.
All right, and it's probably a future discussion, but this, this will bring two hundred more seats to the school district, which is about. It's about fifty seats for us. Um, it also is giving three more shops. The operating assessment is most likely gonna be pretty high for us when it comes online.
Yep, it's stacked, um, yes, um, so it, it's gonna be a, a case of us having to pay more now and more later.
Exactly, and so part of that process.
Very popular at parties right now.
Um, just given the facts really, um, but for us, we have to approve our, our, our part of the election, which is the debt exclusion piece.
Yep.
That Old Colony takes care of their section.
Yep, so I just want to make sure that's clear for everyone. Please come up and have a seat and introduce yourself.
My name is Kristen Howard, and, um, I live on Old Main Street. My question is around debt exclusion. I don't, if it's appropriate, can you give a brief definition of what that means?
I can give one, but I know who can give the best one, our director of finance here.
So I'm, I'm like Ellis, the finance director, can't pull out a chair. Um, uh, uh, debt exclusion is a temporary increase to the tax base. So unlike an override, which is a permanent increase forever. This is a temporary increase to the tax base for the life of the note. So using Andrew's example, thirty years. There's a form when you set the tax rate and you put in that upcoming year's principal and interest payments, and it raises it above the two and a half percent until the note's paid off. Okay, thank you. You want?
Thank you for your question.
And it'll be a lot at first, and then it comes down.
As, yeah.
As time goes by.
Just a little lot, yeah.
Still a lot.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the wording of the warrant. Roll call.
I.
Plug I.
Candy to I. Good.
Yep.
All right, um, section five, three, now the special town meeting warrant articles. Andrew, can you walk us through them and which ones are valid and which ones are no longer going to be part of the discussion?
Yeah, some of the background, I think when I started, my first town meeting was really the annual. The, the pro- the process has been to accept articles. Um, so this is just to accept an article to put on the town meeting warrant. We'll come back at a later time to approve the warrant.
Language.
And then we'll come back again to do a warrant review. So this is just the first part of that. Um, so I'll take it, since, since, since I sent this out on Friday, some articles have come off. And I'll go through each of them, one by one. So the first one, um, is an unpaid invoices. Um, article, which essentially any invoices that were missed for payment in the prior fiscal year. This has to go to town meeting, it's a nine-tenths vote. Um, we just have one. And it's about three hundred bucks or so, so that's what the first one will be. Um, Article two is a CP, um, Community Preservation Committee sponsored article. Um, it's just to, um, recommend that the community preservation. Um, essentially, they get the, uh, potential appointments, the, the applicants for the board. And then they would recommend to the select board to then basically appoint that person.
Much like other boards do currently.
I wasn't aware that that's not.
So it, it's, it's not, so, um, I, I can't speak for why it wasn't done, but the letters had come directly to the select board for the last two appointments, and they didn't end up going through the CPC. Um, they didn't end up making their recommendations. It kind of got skipped over as the way, it just, it not on any intent, it just happened that way. Um, so it was the CPC's desire to, um, codify it, even though we don't have it codified for any other board.
Yeah.
So I don't know, you know, how we want to set a precedent of making a change, but we have done it for, you know, you know, we, we're acknowledging it now, and we know that that will be the process going forward, whether this changes, you know, whether the language here changes or not, um, but the CPC thought it was important enough to bring it forward.
And they had a discussion at their last meeting. I don't think they necessarily care whether it's a, it's a change in the bylaw, it's a policy, it's an MOU between both boards. Maybe an informal policy where we just, that's the process we do.
No.
That's how we do it for all the other boards.
I would be fine having it in a policy document and then cutting down time at town meeting, um, just in general, but, um, if, if the CPC feels strongly en- enough about it, I don't, you know, I wouldn't stand in the way personally.
So what I can do is I'll have a discussion with the CPC chair, uh, uh, person about this, and then we can come back on October sixth.
Yeah, they should be afforded the same.
Yeah.
Um, as any other board, it's just, it was a new board and things just didn't.
Yep.
Click the way they were supposed to.
Um, so Article three, um, is the Town Hall Reuse Building Committee. Took a vote to, uh, basically do a first kind of initial phase, um, background work for a town hall reuse plan. That was voted to be twenty-five thousand. I've since reached out to an OPM who could get us that number. Um, so this is just to fund that out of free cash, twenty-five thousand.
Um, do, do, do we want to make it that specific? If the language is my only question, or do we just want to make it around town hall building reuse? Because if we make the language so specific, if we have leftover funds that we could use for something else for town hall reuse, then we wouldn't be able to, so that's my only call out there, is if the language is too specific, then we end up having to bring it back to vote, and then another vote.
Right.
And another vote.
Yeah, we can take a look at, um, the next week and then bring it back next week, that's totally fine.
Any comments?
Article four, um, it has, it's in process, it's a dilapidated buildings bylaw. Um, we've kind of had discussions internally, it's a very, I guess, difficult one to write and then.
More difficult than it appeared to be on the surface?
Yeah, it's just to get it turned around by the fall town meetings tough.
Okay.
Um, we, we're thinking there's probably, even if we passed it, it's, it's gonna be a nightmare to enforce if we don't write it carefully. Um, but we're still working on that, that'll come back next week as well. And I'll, I'll forward that as soon as I can. Article five is to set up department revolving funds. Might be able, might be able to explain the ingu- ingenuities of that. Essentially, it's, it's common practice in most towns to have these.
Mm-hmm.
Um, essentially, money comes into an account and then it's authorized to spend out of that account. Lakeville is, to my knowledge, has never set that up in its history, um, and so when we sent this to town council, um, initially, it was to set one up specifically for the Conservation Commission. They came back with just a, a general bylaw to, uh, set it up for the townwide, so it's much easier to come back and then add revolving funds as they are desired to be set up.
So back when it was the Conservation Commission, I looked at the agenda and meeting notes. Um, actually, just the agenda, so I didn't look at the meeting notes all. Um, I never saw a vote for this to come as a warrant article. Was there a vote for this to come as a warrant article?
To my knowledge, no, Nancy can, uh, maybe correct that, but to my knowledge, it was more of an informal discussion.
Uh, so I, I think you know my, my stance on like trying to, I like a checklist, I like a checklist like anything. Um, to make sure that we've got all the steps, so.
The original idea was for a wetland bylaw. We've needed a wetland bylaw for a long time. For twenty years, we've had a policy of a twenty-five foot no touch. Um, we just had to deny a project and it probably, or I don't know if it'll get upheld by DEP or not. But, um, they don't recognize policies at DEP, so our original vote was to work on a wetland bylaw.
I didn't see that.
We don't have any money. We don't have any money we can use. We can't use estate money to work on a local wetland bylaw. So then, when I started thinking, how are we gonna get the money? It came to me, we have fees. The wetland fees come in one side, and the fee that to put in the application comes in the other side. And so in twenty twenty-four, I think it was about eight thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. It was spent eight thousand dollars, and it was six thousand dollars, and now we're into the next fiscal year, but it always goes back to the general fund. But I thought that that money, if we did a revolving fund, I can't remember who I talked to, maybe somebody at MACC. If we did a revolving fund, then we can hire somebody. None of us are equipped to write a good wetland bylaw for Lakeville. And I've seen other bylaws before that have been proposed where we take something from one town and we take something from another town that looks good and put it together to make a bylaw. We need a wetland bylaw for Lakeville. We have too many natural resources everywhere of wetlands or water, and we really have needed that for a long time. So when I kind of changed the plan at the last meeting, we had two members out. Um, Bob's daughter Michelle and John LeBlanc was on vacation, so Mark Narc, our newest member, didn't want to take the vote with the two people being out, so it's on our agenda for our next meeting to. I tried to talk them into taking the vote anyway, cause we could always pull it, but I really can't see how it's, would get voted down.
So it probably wouldn't come from, from conservation if it's just a revolving fund for the town at this point. And that's how I would view it.
I would be happy if the selectmen would put it on.
No, I'm just saying, I'm saying it would be a.
Yeah.
It would be a fiscal policy type of thing as opposed to conservation.
It's just something we really need because.
One, because it wasn't voted, and then two, because if you're making a, a revolving, you wouldn't want to do a vote for every board committee and commission to do revolving. It would be tedious, so we would make a policy on it. But Andrew, taking, um, what, uh, Nancy had said. There would be budgets and like not to exceed amounts, or, you know, how, how would those be structured and then I would let our, our.
Um, yeah, Mike, if you want to come up and explain anything I missed, um, essentially, you would set this up and then ev- every year at annual town meeting, you would have a spending limit. Now, I put fifteen thousand, that's not necessarily what they have in their account. Uh, I think they had eight thousand last year, so eight thousand would come in to the revolving account, and they could only spend what they bring in. Um, but then the state, I'm not sure why they do this, they cap it to a certain degree, if you want to explain that kind of.
Um, just as you adopt the, the Mass General Law fifty-three and a half revolving funds, there is a cap required, like a not to exceed essentially for that fiscal year. Just so you don't end up upside down in the fund and not have a funding source for it. Um, typically, as Andrew just explained, it's kind of like a, uh, you know, one and a half times, so like we took in seventy-five hundred, eight thousand, you typically kind of go higher, so you know you're not gonna exceed, but, um, uh, very rarely have I ever seen it in my experience ever go above.
So we would set budgets for each, each one to not exceed.
Yeah, and, um, it would be a freestanding article at every spring town meeting. Um, my previous town, we had fifteen of them, so it was a, like an omnibus, and it had what the revolving fund was and what the not to exceed, what the budget would be for that fiscal year.
Yeah.
Pretty standard, uh.
And this bylaw actually outlines the revenue source and the allowed expenses, so it couldn't be used theoretically. This goes into effect, they can't use it for anything outside of this.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's illegal, obviously, so, um, plus every, every purchase would go through accounting.
Mm-hmm.
So there's, there's checks and balances behind like any other purchase in town.
You know, it's probably a concept that's time has come for.
Yeah, it's a very common practice in a lot of municipalities.
I just don't want it to be so impactful that we become less budget stable than we already are.
Yeah, I think this is a very smaller one.
Yeah, it's a very small one.
That, that, you are correct, that money will come out of the general fund, it'll go to this.
Yep.
Um, and then another important thing, this won't go into effect until July first of twenty-six.
Yes.
And one other thing, Madam Chair, I think that, um, the wetland bylaw that we want to work on would include fines. I think we've all seen in this last year that, I don't think anybody in town has the ability to find. I don't think any of the boards have the ability to find.
I think our, our bylaws have not been crafted very well in like years past as far as.
That's why we want to hire a professional to help us write it, and it will include fines so that we won't be running into, like we have already, one sixty Bedford Street.
I'm gonna let the rest of the board weigh in on any conversations they want to have.
I certainly agree with the need for it to protect the major resources here in the town. Um, but I, again, something you don't want, a board themselves crafting where their, where their fee structure as that goes into the account that the board then decides they want to spend, that, that leads to difficult times moving forward if you get a board that decides they're gonna increase their fee structure to build their account. So definitely needs to be set forward by another entity, whether it's the board or selectmen, based on a, a TA's recommendation. But absolutely needs to be funded and needs to be done right to protect our resources.
Um, okay, so, and Mike, if I'm understanding this correctly, today, we don't have revolving fund accounts.
We have quote-unquote revolving fund accounts, but they're not the Mass General Law fifty-three E and a half revolving accounts. That's a specific voted.
I'm not familiar with that, I'm talking my head, sorry.
So as I said, this would require a vote, um, there's a grid I can send you all, it shows allowable costs, unallowable costs. Um, and as we mentioned, it's, it's gonna be a standing article every spring to vote the cap, whether we had one or we had one hundred, we would have that article to vote the spending limit, so, very common practice.
So does this make, is this kind of, and I'll use Conservation Commission as an example, Nancy's here. Um, so would that would allow her to, you know, application or fees are coming in, right, there's permitting fees and stuff like that?
When you put in a, like a notice of intent or whatever, you have to pay the state fee and we get some of that money, but we can't use that only for very specific purposes. So this, um, the allowed expenses on this one would be, um, for a professional technical consultant, which the main part is to get somebody to help us write a really good wetland bylaw. Um, maintenance of conservation land, we don't have any money. The vigorous property has sat there for years, we don't have any money that conservation, we're responsible for properties. We don't have any money, so that's another thing we could use that for that we can't.
I'm gonna hold you right there.
Yep.
Well, if, say if the Conservation Commission was to write grants, would that grant money go in the fund or would that, how would that?
Uh, no, I would put that on a, it would be under the special revenue umbrella, but it would be under the state or federal or county grant, it wouldn't be a fifty-three.
All right.
Yeah, any question?
Yeah, it's really specific, um, and also I had asked to put in their enforcement actions for violations of the Wetland Protection Act or any future local wetland bylaw. Because if we pass that bylaw, we're gonna need to do enforcement. And we can't use the state money to do, if we need to like hire a, what do you call the guy that goes and says, stop?
Constable?
Can up, yeah. Constable, thank you.
Shout out to Kenny.
Um, so we, it's, it's very specific what we can use it, what we're asking to be able to use it for. I mean, we could also purchase conservation land, but at six and eight thousand dollars, I don't think we'll be buying anything, but who's to say we couldn't chip in a little bit? If CPA was gonna try to, it would be, sometimes you need that other little, like in Middleborough, you don't get CPA funds unless you have partners. So it would just, it just seems like some really good stuff, and I had no idea that we didn't have the, the setup for this when I first started asking about it.
So let me just bring, I, okay, that, that's helpful, thank you, but this is bringing it up one level higher.
Yep.
Um, we don't have revolving funds today per this, the Mass General Law.
That's correct, that, that we're aware of, I, that we've never talked to, yeah.
The Conservation Commission, Nancy, needs funding, they're, they're, they're getting some revenue from fees and stuff like that. Today, it's part of the general budgeting process, and, you know, she allocates, I mean, she advocates and so forth. The revolving funds, what does that give us? Does that put more guardrails in place saying that these funds are coming in and they're tighter, they're more allocated to her and we can't, you lose.
They get to spend them as opposed to being, um, a capital item or a budget transfer or.
Yeah, I was just, I, yeah, I was just gonna add that, it gives you flexibility throughout the year too, so if we take in money on July first, it's in conservation, and it goes to the general fund, it sits for the next three hundred and sixty-five days until it's close to free cash, this actually gives Nancy the.
Okay, that's the key.
Yeah, and it, this gives Nancy the flexibility.
Oh, I see.
She takes in a receipt and another receipt, and then she has an expense, she can charge that expense.
Okay, versus having to wait until it goes, oh, that was.
I thought where you were going with that is, you know, how much money does this take out of the general, uh, general fund if, if more departments are doing it? And, you know, people are doing it because we are.
Well, at the end of the day, it may not, it may not, it may be the same, it's how the money's allocated versus.
They're not spending now and they're gonna spend, then I see, you know. If they're not spending now and they're going to spend, then I see, you know, deficit.
Oh, well, sure, but they.
If they do go and get fees and more fees for things, obviously, there could be a trade off.
Well, you have to be careful how you earmark those fees and how you structure them because you don't want to have uh, it alleged that you're, you increased the fees so much that you can be a powerful entity levying fines against folks.
I personally have always been against that.
Right. But I, I, I a hundred percent, I a hundred percent get your balance there and, and how it has to be structured.
That's why it has a limit. That, that's why you have to put a limit on every year. So it wouldn't help us either to raise the fees if we can't, if there's a limit on what we can spend. So I just think at this point in the town with everything the state's cramming down our throat and all the building and everything, we really need. And not like I haven't always wanted to protect our natural resources, but the times come that we have to have it in, as a bylaw.
Any questions about the article?
One more question. I assume that as these revolving funds are identified, the select board will have authority to approve those. Are they, are they created with, with select board?
Via town meeting approval.
Yeah.
Oh, town me, well, well.
They would get a spending limit at town.
Okay, but this back, even before that, so they want to create a conservation commission revolving fund. Forget about limits and budgets. That will come before the select board and we will determine whether or not that should be revolving fund.
So my understanding is by creating the revolving fund, that's how we are determining it. And then the second part of that is our role would be helping to set the spending limits as opposed to approving things after the fact that we would be setting the spending limits.
That's fine.
Not the individual approvals for the items that are.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not talking about that. Um, even before that, you have to, you got to designate a revolving fund, one for conservation commission. You need one for, I don't know.
So would we just do an overall revolving fund? And then set individual.
Yeah, so there's multiple types. You know, you can have a recreation, you can have a tax study, you can have a conservation.
Right, and, and.
And you would, you would, you kind of set it in arrears. So we're setting this effective July one. So we're going to take a look back at what we collected in twenty-six. And that's how we're going to know like fifteen thousand is a good spending cap for this because we only took in X amount. So you're kind of building it, you're looking at the prior year's, you know, revenue and expense, your budget to actual. And then that's kind of where you determine your.
But we have multiple.
So you know, so you're spending what you already closed going into that next fiscal year. So you're kind of limiting yourself so you don't run a deficit.
Yeah, oh, and I'm okay with that. But again, let's back up one more step. We have to identify who's going to get the revolving fund, conservation commission, animal control, animal.
The grid I mentioned, it lists like all the applicable departments.
And maybe some for whatever reason, we don't want to have revolving funds.
You can rescind, you can uh, vote on it. You can even rescind one that's already been existing. Like if five years from now, you wanted to rescind this one.
Well, okay.
So would we do a chart for town meeting and layout which ones that we're doing and what the spend threshold would be?
Yeah. Just, just right now, it's just conservation. We have, I haven't identified any others. We could still theoretically identify them before the annual and it would still be effective the same date, which would be July first, twenty-six.
So wouldn't we want to just identify doing revolving funds and then?
We just don't know which ones they're gonna be yet. Um, this is just the only one that is coming to our attention. Generally, there's a recreation one.
Yeah, I'm very used to that one as well.
But would they have to be approved through you, Madam Chair? Would they have to be approved at town meeting?
It would have to go on.
Yeah, everyone that came through, would somebody else would have to do what I just did.
That's, that's, that's the answer.
Every single one, right.
Town meeting will, conservation commission wants one, recreation wants one, okay. Okay, so it's town meeting approval, okay.
Any other questions, General? All right. Thank you, let's move on to.
Thank you. Six.
Article six is a citizen's petition. Um, I'll just read it out. Uh, to see if the town will vote notwithstanding chapter thirty-two B of the general laws or any other general or special law to the contrary, part-time elected officials in the town of Lakeville who receive a salary or stipend shall not be eligible for particip- for participation in the town's contribu- contributory health and life insurance benefit plan effective March first, two thousand twenty-six.
So this is a citizen's petition and that means we cannot change it or edit it in any way. Um, and I don't, I don't, oh, wait, I do.
Yeah.
I do, you were hiding, you had a hat and glasses. Um, as the petitioner, would you like to speak about this petition?
Um, sorry. Ooh, can I also, my mouth is a little weird. Uh, basically, this is just, um, I'm really sorry. This is just about, um, I have to take this off. This is just to make aware um, the citizens of Lakeville of how this started, when it started, the costs involved. Um, how, how it came about that the select board decided that they should be town employees, be considered town employees because this, this insurance that you are all receiving comes from the, the town insurance fund. And so I've done about three months of research and I've come up with a lot of information. But when I did the petition, I did show them what we wanted to do. But the main reason for the petition was to finally show the um, or educate the citizens of what this cost. Because it's never brought up in the budget each year. It's never been approved by them, this insurance, its cost, anything. It was brought up in two thousand eighteen and they said they would do a further study, but it, it never got done. And as insurance costs rise and rise and rise, it's costing this town a lot of money. So my, my goal is to do the presentation, inform the citizens, okay? The history, how much it's cost and what my proposal is. And if they decide that you should get insurance, great. If they decide not, then I think now we've turned it over to the town to decide any compensation that you may get besides your stipend. Because the town only votes on your stipend and the budget, it does not vote on the insurance or the buyout you receive. So it's more of an education, let them know, of course, the, that, there, the proposal could be amended.
Actually, it can't be amended.
So if someone said that.
On the floor. There was a bylaw that was passed in twenty twenty-three. And hold on, section seventy-four dash eight. See, I can remember this, but I can't remember where my keys are.
That's fine.
Seventy-four dash eight, um, that was passed in twenty twenty-three that states that any citizen petition by law on town meeting floor cannot be amended on town meeting floor.
Well, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. No, 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 I'm good. I, I just wanted to see if, if someone said, well, not now, maybe April, May, it's, it's fine. I mean, I think the, the gist of the, of the warrant is going to do what I want it to do. And just.
Bring attention to it.
Just bring attention to it. And uh, what I, whatever happens, what I really want is to have everything presented to the town in the budget that they're voting on so that, now, this isn't pointing at this present board, okay? This has been going on for years. This insurance and how it was done. So I really want to start fresh and say, we need to do this going forward. And I think it's important that the town votes on it and not to be, continue to be ignored every year. Because it's not brought up.
Well, I do, and I think you are right. I think it was twenty eighteen that it was brought up and.
And then it dropped.
Yeah, it failed at town meeting.
Right.
Yeah. It wasn't dropped, it, it failed.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just think it's time to restart it. Whatever happens, happens. But I, I, you know, I, I just looking at the budget and what's going on and, you know, we're, we're budgeted to spend present course, two and a half to three million dollars on your benefits for eleven people over the next ten years.
So you're saying if everyone took the max of everything, is that what you're saying?
From, from the three people who take it now to the eleven people who get it, that's going to range at a, even at an increase of eight to ten percent in insurance, which could be more, you're talking about two to three million dollars over ten years. I've done the math. I've gotten all my things. So those are my concerns. So, and if the town wants to do that, God bless them. But I don't think they know what's happening. Because any of the petition, I know, did not know this. Because it hasn't been brought up in so many years. So once again, I want, I just want it out in the open. The town decides, sure, you should get it, I'm all for it. If not, then we need to go further.
Sure.
So this isn't a mean thing, I just want to, I'm just concerned about what's going on now. Because we don't have, our, our cookie jar only has an Oreo cookie in it. So, well, thank you for letting me speak.
You're very welcome.
And I'm sorry for my.
No, good luck with your tooth.
Thank you. My wife's gonna yell at me.
All right. Uh, any questions or comments on article six or any clarifications? Hearing none, we'll move on to seven.
And the last one is, um, I think it's long been discussed since I've started at least. Uh, this will make it so that the school district uh, elections will have a recall provision.
So on the recall provision and the exact language of the recall provision, I saw it's different than our town recall provision.
Yeah, I, I didn't quite make it clear, there's one point where they, we, Freetown and us have to agree on it, whether it's going to be like ours, um, which is I think they go back on the ballot.
Or, yeah, they can go back after two years, is it?
Yeah, it's ba- basically where they want to mirror to the, what the towns have now or something separate.
Yeah.
So this isn't quite.
It does have to be exact for both towns, uh, otherwise it fails.
Yep. So um, it sounds like pretty much all these articles except article six, um, just have small little work to do and we can come back next week and finally accept them and put them on the warrant.
Okay. Any questions about article seven? I know we had a nice robust conversation with Freetown before. Um, and then, is that, is that it? It can't be it.
Yeah, I mean, I.
It's so small. It's got twenty-seven items.
I took off a couple.
Yes.
Um, one was to supplement the budget, which we don't have to do. Another one was CPA, not CPA. As Board of Assessors, we're looking about potentially increasing the exemption amount of personal property and.
They're gonna bring that back.
Probably in the annual.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, fantastic. Um, I don't think we need to take a vote at this time. We just went over them and then what this will do will give Andrew the power to continue on with KP Law crafting the language um, and making sure all the boxes are checked um, and all the due diligence has been done. And on to the next. We already did that. Uh, water allocation for thirteen Harding Street. Uh, there's a letter from Riverhawk here explaining the request for water and a map showing the existing and proposed water line. Did anyone have any questions or comments on the request for connection to the public water supply at thirteen Harding Street? Hearing none, I'll make a motion. I remove the select board to point the water connection application as presented at thirteen Harding Street and reserves the right to modify and or rescind should actual water use data change? Should actual water use data comma? Change of building use or any other qualifying events require such action? A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Kate, there, there's also a note in here from our Board of Health.
Oh, Board of Health agent and building commissioner have reviewed the request and have determined that the water allocation would be sufficient for the project.
Uh.
Motion and a second.
What's, what's the letter I have, who's, the health agent is questioning the.
No, do I have?
The volume. Is requesting clarification.
There we go, hold on. System is oversized, so they could add more. That's usually not the, the issue. Less than twenty, six fifty seems excessive. Andrew, do you have a layer?
I do, so I, I reached, so Ed's letter was, well, the application came in, Ed's letter um, was next. And then I reached out to Riverhawk Environmental, which is the uh, Muckees or actually it's ten Harding Streets engineer. Um, basically said it was conservative number, just a number they thought they could, if anything happened, they could use. Um, more or less the reason for this request is that ten Harding Street's being built. The water line goes through uh, Route forty-four. Um, and Muckees is not on town water right now and they would like to be. So ten Harding Street is gonna, I guess, do that for them. So Riverhawk was really just looking at a conservative number they could ask for. Um, if you want to just go with what Ed Cullen put, that's totally fine, I think, which would be four hundred and sixty-five gallons as opposed to six fifty.
Four sixty-five, I'm looking at four forty-four.
Yeah, plus the twenty.
Plus the twenty, okay. Um, I will look to the board to see your thoughts. Um, I've never heard of anyone like holding space for other people's water. Um, a little bit.
Essentially.
I would rather they come back personally. I'd rather taking uh, that note into consideration, which again, I need to look at the back of all the pages. Taking that note into consideration, I would be comfortable amending uh, my motion to uh, four hundred and sixty-one gallons per day. Um, and then we could modify or rescind after. So um, I move the select board approve the water connection in the amount of four hundred and sixty-one gallons per day for thirteen Harding Street and reserves the right to modify or rescind should actual water use data change, change of building or any other qualifying event require such action? Chris, you got the face on.
You know, uh, no, you came up with four sixty-one, so they, they, four forty-four plus twenty?
Fifteen.
Isn't it four forty-four plus twenty?
Oh, should it be four forty-four, so four sixty-four?
Right, just so we have some logic and a number, great, thank you. Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hon, I.
Pluck I.
And you do it. Thanks for the teamwork. Um, appointments and licenses, hon? None?
None.
Well, well, someone must have been happy with our, our last three attempts.
I'm getting it right.
Um, let's see, subcommittee updates, start with O'Callaghan.
We have not had a meeting as we're still waiting for the uh, MSBA to provide comments on the uh, on the proposal.
All right.
So no meeting is scheduled. They're due to come back, oh, I believe it's this week.
Perfect, and Member Carbone is off tonight. Technology Advisory Subcommittee.
That was going to be scheduled for Oc, we did not have a meeting last month. Uh, because we had another select board meeting, I think, if I recall correctly. So I, the next one would have been October fourteenth, but we have another, we have a joint select board and planning board meeting that night. So I'm, we don't have anything pressing, so I'm going to cancel that one. Uh, and our next one will be November, uh, November eleventh.
Thank you. Uh, it's veteran's day.
Yes, I, yes.
Have it on holidays.
Really?
So the twelve.
I don't mind.
It's a state rule.
Where's my gavel?
Is that a law?
It is, it is, yeah, we, we.
And you don't have holidays.
You thought you had it all, but no.
I will TBD for the next meeting.
All right, well.
See you at Christmas.
Thank you, I'll let you know. Yeah, oh my god, goodness, okay.
Communication Community, Member Carbone. To- Town Hall Building Reuse Subcommittee is on October sixteenth, correct? It's my birthday. That's how I'll be Sunday with you guys.
Wouldn't that be a holiday? Be a holiday as well.
I'll declare, the chair so declares. Uh, Economic Development Committee. And Energy Advisory Committee. Is there another member on here besides Carbone? Oh, she's on a lot. We just cut down half of our agenda. Um, I'm gonna go back to announcements, but I skipped over to get to the, to the good people of, uh, Akerling. Select board announcements. Um, as many of you might have noticed, we had a scam, uh, alert for, uh, for people in the town. It did not come from the town of Lakeville, but they were, uh, purporting to be from the town of Lakeville over, uh, permit fees. So, uh, if you get something, how did they get this? Uh, was it by email, by text?
Email.
People got an email. If you get something that looks funky, never reply to the email. Always go back to the source and, you know, just reach out to the town. Um, don't ever reply to the email. Um, that's, that's, that's a good way to get all your information uh, taken. Um, Arts and Music Festival, uh, let's see. Lakeville Arts and Music Festival take place on Saturday, October fourth, between ten AM and four PM. Exciting entertainment, Elastic Five Band, Old Colony Highlander Bagpipe, Big Ryan Tall Tales, Upon a Quit High Jazz Band and Toe Jam Puppet Band, to name a few. Silent Auction, um, and all sorts of awesome stuff as usual. It's always a very well-attended event. Um, and it's this Saturday, so please come out. It's at the Historic Town Hall. Does it spread out anywhere else besides Historic Town Hall?
Yes, in the surrounding parking lots, the church.
Yeah, the church across the street, yeah, so surrounding parking lot too. Um, we have the upcoming Snowperson Jubilee last year. Oh, actually, Lakeville Ace Hardware, Fourth Annual Grilling for Dogs fundraiser, um, benefiting our, uh, animal shelter. Uh, Saturday, October eleventh, eleven AM to three PM, hot dog chips and soda for five dollars. A grill giveaway. It's a Weber, uh, Weber Spirit E two-ten and prizes. It's a really great event to benefit our dog shelter. Second Annual Snowperson Jubilee, uh, starting October first. Um, it's, uh, they're purchasing snow persons for twenty-five dollars. You create your design, um, and add a holiday message and return it back by November thirtieth, and then they have the display on the Old Town Hall Month for the month of December. And then you have a Snowperson Village event on Saturday, December thirteenth at two PM with hot cocoa, caroling, and having fun with family and friends. There'll also be awards for first, second, and third place. Uh, become a corporate sponsor to, to defray material costs. A Frosty sponsor is a hundred. A Jack Frost sponsor is two hundred, and a Abominable Smo- Snowman sponsor is three hundred. Uh, for more info and to purchase a snow person is lakeville snowpeople at gmail dot com. And I give the phone number, but I couldn't read it if you paid me. It's in a, it's in a snowflake. It's in a snowflake. Um, is more information, is it on our website under news?
Yeah, yes.
More information under news, yes. Oh, Lakeville Christmas Stroll. Was that tied to the Snowman Jubilee? I thought that was part of the Snowman Jubilee.
No, I don't think so. I think this is, this is what takes place at Ted Williams Camp.
Got it. Lakeville Christmas Country Stroll. Is it the same date as the Snowman Jubilee?
Yeah, yep.
Oh, okay. Um, enjoy a unique twist on a traditional parade. You walk, the parade stays. Decorate your car, truck, or trailer for this themed non-moving parade. Um, free admission, family and friends, all welcome, costume and holiday attire encouraged. Uh, dress warm and bring your holiday cheer. Um, and then the Snowperson Jubilee immediately following at two PM at Town Hall. Um, there's a registration as well. One thing I don't see on here, um, that is, uh, an announcement is the trunk or treat at the parks. That's coming up. What date is that? Anyone have a top in their hand? Nineteen, so, um, please remember, uh, how excellent it was if you came last year. And they'd be excited to see you again. It was well-attended. Um, any other select board announcements?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is speaking, I think he's coming in now. Uh, the Lakeville Fire Open House, is everybody aware of that?
The Lakeville what?
Lakeville Fire Department Open House.
Oh, when is this year's open house?
October eleventh.
All right.
Uh, Chief?
Do we have the announcement on?
The Lakeville, uh, the Fire Department Open House? October eleventh? Eleven to.
All right, make sure it is on the.
Should be on the website.
I don't have a copy.
Eleven to two.
Very good, thank you. All right, any correspondence? There's, um, some love letters from Verizon, changing and updating rates. Um, it will be in our agenda portfolio if anyone wants to be, see specifically what those rate changes are. There are way too many to list. Any new business to come before the board? Any old business to come before the board? Uh, the next select board meeting date is October sixth, twenty twenty-five, at the police station. Uh, now we're going to enter into executive session. Oh, actually, I need a motion to adjourn after. Wait, losing my order of operations here. I do, I will. All right, motion, uh, for executive session pursuant to MGL, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A one, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And reason number two, possible exec- executive session pursuant to MGL, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the body, police, fire, DPW, laborers, dispatchers. And reason number three, possible executive session pursuant to MGL, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A seven, to review and approve executive session minutes not to be released, uh, September sixteen, twenty twenty-five, not to return to open session.
Second.
Deep breath. Uh, motion and a second. Roll call?
Hunt, eye.
Plug eye.
Can do that. All right, um, with that, um, we're in executive session.